Nancy.
Yeah, that looks good. Oops, sorry. So Matt, did you get the check yet? Or no, that wouldn't come to you, that grant check? Correct for H for this society?
Eddie.
Hey Matt, did the Historic Society get their check out?
Good afternoon, guys.
Hey Eric, how are you?
Not too bad. How are yourself?
Good. So since you're here, I'm going to make you the host. Hey Matt, can you hear me?
I don't know if, huh? No, I was muted.
Ah, there you go. Okay, I didn't know if you could hear me or not.
I couldn't.
Okay, I was just gonna check. I'm gonna bow out now that Eric's in, but I was just checking. Do you know if the Historical Society has received their grant check out?
I don't know yet. I'm sorry.
It may have just went out yesterday, but anyway, it's on its way.
Okay, no, I really appreciate that. That's amazing news. So thank you so much. We're probably gonna invest it back into some of the place making stuff that we're working with Chris Hardgrove on, but
Great.
Hey, you know, what it works, whatever way it works.
Whatever, you know, that's it. All right. You guys have a good meeting. Whoops, that's Eric. How do I make you the host? Right there. Hey Eric, do me a favor, because if I make you the host, you may get the recording. So just let me know if something pops up, but it should come to me.
Okay, will do.
Thanks.
Yep, no problem.
See ya.
Yep, thanks. Have a good Saturday.
You as well, everyone.
Thanks Nancy. Hey Eric. Hey, how's it going, guys?
Good, how are you?
Ah, too bad.
Say, I'm sorry to make you work on a Saturday, Eric.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah, thanks Eric.
I do know how to Zoom meeting all by myself, but guess the city won't allow that.
Yeah, no, no worries. Do we know how many people will have?
I just got an email from Helene. Her morning meeting's running late, so she's gonna try to join us, but be late. But meanwhile, Cash can only be here for a certain amount of time, right? So.
Uh, yeah, I've got about 90 minutes.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get through what as much as we can in the, the time allowed. I appreciate everybody. I'm, I'm cleaning up my desk here. Just a second. And I think Lauren's gonna be here and
I think CJ's not gonna be able to make it, if I remember.
CJ's not gonna be here and Jason wasn't sure.
That may not constitute a quorum.
Um, no, we don't need a quorum.
Yeah, I think, I think we don't need one, because it's a special meeting.
This is a working session.
Yeah.
So I have sent a mail. Since it's a working session, it's just that if three or more of us get together, we have to announce it as a meeting.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, cool. The sunshine law, Colorado sunshine law.
Yeah. So and right to sunshine, I've forwarded that to Case. Because it's like, gosh, you beat us to it, you know?
Well, at least it's information. So, you know, for the benefit of the record, for the other folks here, and I'm sure this will be recorded, that obviously the amendments, the Title 16 cover two kind of two areas, areas that affect the Historic Preservation Commission directly. And I think it's rightfully so that we, we address those to, and focus on that. The city managers also asked the Historic Society to make recommendations on some of the development stuff. And Linda, or Melinda, I, I sent you the draft of what we basically are going to be sending the city manager. You know, it probably just for visibility for everybody else in the commission, if you want to publish that along with, just so everybody else, because I have cash, may be interested in seeing what the changes are in that. And I'm sure the other folks. So these two will hopefully dovetail in the unique benefit with the Historic Society championing some of the development stuff is we can get, we can get a little coarser with that and push a little, little differently.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and I don't know who that is on the phone there.
It's Lauren.
Hi Lauren.
Oh, okay.
Going.
Ah, we're good. Well, let's get started then. If you all agree, I've got Jason's draft and our, our current working draft up. And so I'll share my screen and then we can say talk, talk through some of these changes. So.
Melinda, I, I, so I was reading through, I made a few notes, not on the document itself, but I made a few notes as, as related to Jason's version.
Okay.
I do have comments regarding that. I, I was kind of working off of that one specifically, so.
That's what I did too. I mean, I started with the one that was the working draft, but then since Jason redlined it, I just worked with his.
Okay, then let's look at that one.
And the question, because I wasn't able to make the last meeting, is the idea to get this as far along as we can in this working session so that it's ready for a vote by us to recommend whatever we come up with to counsel at our next meeting?
Yes. And, and so because we, we could spend a whole meeting just on this, so wanted to make it a little easier to stream what our next, in our next official meeting.
Yeah.
And I've incorporated Lauren's changes into the draft already. And then, so now we have Jason's changes. So we, if we maybe just leaf through it here. For instance, that in A1 there, Lauren recommending deleting that because it's redundant on the previous statement. And I agree. And then we, in paragraph three, we just changed to historically significant and then resources instead of all of the verbiage about historic structures and districts. Because they're all resources. And then the paragraph four is one that was added already. And let's see, this is a a Lauren change also. Instead of designated as architectural layer historically significant, just say designated as an Inglewood historic landmark.
Can I make one comment on that section?
Yeah.
Um, I, we should tinge it to any property owner wishing to have a building, structure, site, object, or district, since there's like five different types that it could be.
Okay.
Types of landmark.
Why you do that real fast? So Lauren, you, your changes are in red and Jason's are in blue. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we, to help kind of move through this, because this is a really long document. It took me a while to get through all of it.
Yeah.
Notes. So we're, so we can get this done in the time with cash, because having cash here is incredibly valuable, obviously, with his background. So we get, if we can get done within his allotted time, that's probably beneficial. Melinda, do you, maybe as a recommendation, could Lauren go through the changes that she made in the document with, is referring to red? And then as it dovetails in with the blue, we can go over those that way.
Although I will, I will say, I think that at least in my version, and you know, track changes is always a little odd, because colors show up differently on different people's computers, depending on the version of Word they're working with. This is
That's true.
The bane, this is the bane of attorney's existence, I can assure you, dealing with fact changes documents. So on mine, I see the blue and the, the bright red, like on, on pages one on the two. And then Jason's additions, you know, substantial additions to, to the following pages show up in a sort of different shade of red for me. And I can see it's Jason, because it's, it shows that he's the one who added it all. But I, I, like I said, I know sometimes this can vary across people's versions of Word.
Yeah. Well, and, and Jason's is in the older version of Word too. Which is maybe why it's it's just the doc instead of the doc X.
Um, you know what, Cash? I just switched my view from simple markup to all markup. And when it was in simple markup, all of Jason's changes showed up as blue and mine were in red. But then when I changed it to all markup, I see what you're talking about with some of his changes in red and then some different shade of red and blue above. So I don't know if that.
Yeah, no, it's in, in any event, I, I think we can figure it out. But I, I, I think Matt's idea is a good one. If, if Lauren maybe wants to, if you want to walk through what you did briefly, and then we can go from there and then maybe talk about, I guess, Matt, along the lines of what you were saying, Lauren, if you want to walk through what you did, and then we can maybe talk a little bit globally about Jason's additions, which were significant. And then maybe we can drill down to finer points. Is that the right way to?
I like that, because we can keep, we can keep the momentum with that personally. Melinda, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Um, so I really only changed a few things under Section Two, Commission Review. I added that Paragraph A about staff receipt and initial review. And I should also say that everything I added, I basically just copied and pasted from our landmark, the, the application itself and the instructions that we developed, you know, what was that, like a year and a half ago? So that's where I got all of my information. There was nothing really new to it. But so that initial two point, I don't, there's so many different breakdowns here, but it's Commission Review, Section A, Staff Receipt and Initial Review. I added that paragraph. And then Jason added kind of every, a lot of other stuff in that section. And the where I, I just added in a few more things. Actually, maybe he took mine out now that I'm looking at this. Um. Yeah, most of the rest of that is what he had added in.
Yeah.
So, and then, and then the next thing I did was then under D criteria. I changed it to add again those five different types, building structures, sites, objects, and districts. And then I added in the five criteria, A, B, C, D, and E, that we had developed in our landmark application. And that's just all verbatim. And then I added in that number two about properties to be considered for landmark nomination are typically at least 50 years old. However, exceptions can be made for properties which have demonstrated historic significance within the last 50 years. So that's, yeah, that's a pretty basic summary of what I did. And then I think I also in that, under districts, that next section, B, where it says, I changed it to, instead of two thirds, the majority of the property owners, I changed it to 50% because that's what we, again, what we had decided on when we developed the application.
Yeah.
The, so under, this is under D criteria, and it's number three, integrity criteria. It shows up in blue for me. Was that one of your additions, Lauren?
No, that's one of Jason's. And I will say those, they're called the seven aspects of integrity, and that's a very standard thing for, or it's a requirement in the National Register of Historic Places. And pretty standard things to look at. I will say, when we were doing the app, when we were developing the landmark application itself, we decided to opt out of including these because they're a little more detailed, a little more nuanced when you're looking at properties to kind of work out some of these, like feeling and work, or feeling and association, which are pretty subjective. So we had decided to leave them out. I don't know if there's a specific reason he put them in. But they are pretty, they're a requirement for the National Register of Historic Places and for the State Register.
Yeah, that makes sense. And my question in reading through it, that is just maybe it needs some clarifying language, and we can circle back to this before we get too granular about it. But i- is the idea that these integrity criteria, in other words, the integrity of the historic features or character of the property, that is something that the, the commission is supposed to evaluate in determining whether a designation is appropriate?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it does seem like we're getting pretty granular there, though.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. It's basically just, you know, is it, is it still like it was historically, you know? If a house was built in 1920, if the original builder came back, would he still recognize it, you know? And it's just looking at all of these different factors to evaluate that.
Is it a, and you know, again, I don't want to get too granular just yet, but in the, in the typical usage, is this list, is this list illustrative or exhaustive? In other words, are these just examples of criteria that can be used to evaluate integrity? Or is this the whole list? Because that probably is something that's worth clarifying, because whenever there's, whenever there are factors set out, you have to be careful about, is this all that you can look at? Or is this an example, a, a set of examples of what you can look at? Does that make sense?
It does. That's a good question. It's just the seven. You look at these seven factors.
Got it.
Also, it says shall, which is, puts an obligation in there versus say should. So it seems pretty strict.
Very specific. Well, one of the points, and I've, I've got a series of notes on this, and it did throw me off with feeling, feeling and association. And then in Lauren, you'd, you'd kind of alluded to this, that's, that's incredibly subjective.
Yeah.
What constitutes the definition of what a feeling is, as, as we're surrounding a physical object? What constitutes the definition of what a feeling is, as, as we're surrounding a physical object?
Um, I can't say off the top of my head, but there has been guidance developed by the National Park Service, explaining each of these criteria and specifically feeling and association. Um, so there is, there are certain things that you look at. I mean, association is, is it so still associated with its historic use or function or? Uh, I can't think, you know, like if the if a historic train car has been turned into somehow a house, you know, it doesn't have that necessarily, that same association. And if it's been moved away from the train tracks, it doesn't have that association. And feeling is even more subjective. And it's just, you know, does it feel like it did historically? Does it, if you go to that place or that site, do you get that same sense that this is a historically significant place? And like I said, there, there is developed guidance for how to evaluate all seven of these. I just can't state it off the top of my head.
Well, I don't want to go into too much on this specifically, but you know, so I, I, I kind of think about this as how city council is going to view this as they read through it. And they may not have the history or, or experience with understanding this guidance that may exist there. So it might be worth adding that in just to understand, kind of help our audience understand what, because I mean, if it's, if it's a national thing, and this, this is something that's accepted broadly, we can use that as, as a reason why we put it in. The explanation for it. But then again, you know, city council goes to approve this and they go, feel it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, no, I, I understand the importance of this. And I think, I think it's important from, from both sides, whether it's the, the person seeking a designation or, or someone opposing it, evaluate the physical integrity, because it's something was, if something was historic and that feature is no longer intact, then is it really worth this designation or protection? So I understand why that's in there. I wonder if I agree with everything Matt said. I, I think it's, it, it, it may raise some eyebrows. I, I wonder if the solution to this is to make this section reference, and Lauren, you would have to fill in the blanks here, whether it's National Park Service or others, reference sets of guidelines and, and maybe make it a, the commission shall evaluate physical integrity and may look to such guidelines as and list certain examples, rather than spell out these criteria. Because the other issue is if those guidelines are revised or changed, the criteria change, you know, this section, if it's in a city ordinance, can become out of date. Whereas if you're making reference to organizations' guidelines generally, and they update them or revise them or change them, it keeps, it keeps the ordinance a little more flexible. So I'm wondering if maybe that's the solution here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, like adding the word generally in front of using, you know, evaluated for their physical inten- integrity generally using the following criteria, criteria.
Well, I, I like what Cash said here, because basically what it would be is that we would, we would pick out the things like location, design, setting, materials, and workmanship. And those would be, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Cash, but those would be the main topics that we would, that would be, we'd be held to on a regular basis for understanding this. And then we would separate out and state, you know, specifically that whatever the National Register's policies are, the, the accepted process that, that is currently allowed. Um, and reference that in there and leave feeling and association to be a little bit more subjective based upon what these other organizations have defined. There are problems with that too, because then we're kind of linking two codes together more ambiguous here. We're, we're, we're voting to approve something that's tied with a, a law that we don't have control over.
Yeah. The, I, I agree with that. And, and you know, still another solution. And I understand in the, the typical process with the National Register, like Lauren pointed out, this is a, this is a shall, as in you must deal. But the other option is to say something like shall be evaluated for their physical integrity. Using the following, using criteria such as, and make it, make it illustrative rather than exhaustive. In other words, examples of what, what can be looked at or should be looked at versus what has to be looked at. That's another way to go to.
Lauren, what do you think of that?
Um, to me, it's either an all or none, just because, like I said, these are, you know, when you're working with the National Registry and the State Register, these are essential. So to me, it's either we include all seven of these or none at all. And, you know, part of this, this discussion we're having now is, you know, kind of the reason why we didn't include them in the first place is because it's, it's something that's just kind of, I don't know, more difficult to define and to pin down and gets into the details. So that's what, like, my original thought was, is that this is something like, as a commission, we would be following these when we are reviewing not the landmark applications, but not having it on paper. So it's not to have to, you know, really explain this much why we chose these and what these specific things are. So.
I mean, yeah, still, still another solution is to go vaguer and just say that, more vague. I don't know if vaguer is a word, but all, all properties and districts shall be evaluated for their physical integrity and not have criteria, period.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. In which case, we don't really need that whole section. Since that section is just listing the integrity criteria.
Yeah, then, yeah, maybe is, is integrity set out somewhere else? It probably is.
Um, I might search here somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, integrity is referenced in the document four times. Um, the first one is under, zoom out here real fast. The first one is under. By C, section C, all the way down to eight. A, C eight A. It, and it references, is a, if a historic property, this historic property or historic district has been altered to a degree that isn't, that it no longer retains its historic integrity. The owner may apply to the commission for revocation of the designation. And then we have the area that we're talking about now. And then we have again, that area, and then further on down, infill construction to protect the integrity of a historic district and environment.
Yeah.
And these are all.
So I'm not actually.
In the Jason additions here.
Yeah. So I, I guess in looking through that, I, I ran the same search you did, Matt, and tracked all those. I'm, I'm not sure that, that clearly in the, the current version that we're looking at, that it clearly says physical integrity of, of the historic features shall be evaluated as part of the process of coming up with a designation. So I, whether it's a separate section or whether it can be put somewhere else, I think we need that statement. But I think maybe the best solution after that discussion is to, is to not include the criteria.
Lauren?
Um, yeah, I think that's fine. Yeah, I think it would just keep it simple. We can know what we're, we can follow those seven as we're reviewing nominations. But in the actual text, just leaving it simpler.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it can be set out in our process, but it doesn't need to be set out in city ordinance.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Right, right. Because I, like I said at the front, I, I think it's important that that aspect be considered and physical integrity of the property of the historic features and, and should be mandatory to consider that. But I think, yeah, I think it's probably okay to not, to not have the criteria listed. And then, you know, in issuing, in issuing a designation or, or denying one or, or dealing with an application for an alteration or any of it, you know, it's you, you, the, the commission can look at these other sources, the National Register, the State Register to come up with that. But I, I think that, I think that's the right approach, where it leaves some flexibility, but, but has it as a mandatory consideration in the, in the process.
So what's the consensus? Um, reject this change?
I think it's reject A through G and just keep it as all properties and districts shall be evaluated for their physical integrity.
And the only additional suggestion I would have beyond that, just in reading this, just for clarity purposes, I, I wonder if we ought to add something like for the physical integrity of the historic features that constitute the basis of the application or something like that. Not a, not a must have, but just to make it a little clearer what we're saying there.
Mm hmm.
Okay, wait a second.
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine with me. What does everybody else think about that?
Thoughts?
Will you say it again? Sorry, I was kind of having trouble.
Oh, you're, sorry, I forgot you're on the phone. So, so we changed that section that says integrity criteria, which we probably just need to change the title of that section too. But we deleted the criteria and changed it to read, all properties and districts shall be evaluated for the physical integrity of their historic features.
Yeah, I think that's great. And we could change it to aspects of integrity, uh, because that's what they're, that's what they're called in the National Register as aspects.
Fine, yeah.
So the header three would change the aspect.
Instead of physical?
For the aspects of aspects of physical integrity of their historic features. Is that right, Warren?
Yes, um, but I would, that, that sounds fine, but I was actually saying for the title, um, instead of integrity criteria.
Okay. And taking out the word criteria.
Integrity, take out the integrity and leave aspects of, oh yeah, aspects of integrity. That's right.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me a second. I have a phone call coming in. Keep looking. Hello? Hello, I'm in a meeting. Uh, a while yet. Okay. All right. No, you dropped them in cold water. Okay. Sorry about that. He's calling from Idaho and he only has cell phone coverage when he gets a, a little ways away from home. So it's I kind of have to answer when he calls. Okay, so we have item three is aspects of integrity. And it reads, all properties and districts shall be evaluated for the physical integrity of their historic features. And that's.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Great.
Yep.
Okay.
Easy enough.
All right.
Did, um, so we all read through this, right? Because I've, I've got my notes here, if we want to continue with that.
Yeah, so.
Um, so general questions here, and this is kind of addressed in a couple areas. I just want to help get a little bit of clarity on this. Amendments to designations and changes allowed on the property. So that was kind of addressed in a couple different areas. And I think it was more in the area that Jason had put in. But just so I'm clear with this, how how would amendments of designation work? If somebody, for instance, says, I bought this house, it's designated. I knew what I was getting into, but I don't want it to be designated anymore. How does that work?
Um, the way I understand this section is that it's just, it's not to change a designation or to undesignate a property, it's to change kind of the landmark application itself. So if there was a designated landmark that had a house and an outbuilding and both were included in the nomination, and then the outbuilding gets demolished for some reason, then it's changing it to reflect that. Um, that's how I see this, not that they're no longer wanting it to be designated. Because that's, as far as I know, that's not something that usually happens. Once it's designated, it's designated. Unless there's changes to it that have affected its physical integrity.
So, yeah, so my, my read of it, Matt, was the sections that, that Melinda has up on her screen right now. There's number seven, amendment of designation. And, and that to me read as, this is if you want to add features to the designation. And I guess it's not totally clear whether that amendment process is, is, while the application is under consideration or if you can do it at a later time, it suggests perhaps it's both. So that's addition of features. Number eight, the revocation of designation is, is what I read more is what you're talking about. Where if, if there's a designation and someone wants to, a property owner, I guess, wants to seek a revocation, they can apply for it. And it has to, it has to follow the same procedures as the designation in the first place. So in other words, to Lauren's point, it, once it's designated, it's designated. And to remove the designation, you have to go back through the same process, which means the, the, the commission and ultimately the council with the way it's set out in this draft.
Yeah, I think, sorry, I didn't see that section eight there. So, yeah.
So that's good. I mean, there's well, to, to Lauren's point, that it's not typical that people would remove the status, but there is at least an avenue that creates some process associated to one that listens asked.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think you have to, I, I'm sure it would be, I mean, hopefully it would be a process that, like you said, Matt, would not be typical. But I do think you have to have that process for a variety of reasons, whether, whether it's a, a property owner has a reason for doing it, they have to have an avenue to try. Or, I mean, as it says in the draft, if, if, if the property's been altered to a degree that it's, it does not retain its historic integrity, then it's potentially devaluing the worth of a designation. So I think you want the process in place. And I, I would imagine the council would, I mean, that's something that they would want to see uh, in, as part of this, I think, in potentially adopting it. Eric, I have a question for you. You, you, you've probably said this before. So I apologize for asking a question you've probably answered before. Once we get through our drafting and approve something to recommend to council, does it go through the city attorney first before it gets to council?
Yes.
I, I assumed as much, because the issue with this is, once we getting to a clean copy and, and reading through it and making sure things line up, because I think I read through it a couple of times this morning. And I, global comment, I thought Jason's additions were all very good and addressed a lot of the questions I had about the initial working draft. I, I think it puts in a number of processes that were, that were lacking from the initial draft and, and did a nice job with that. There's, there's probably some overlap and stuff that just needs cleanup once we get to a clean version. And, and the, you know, the city attorney will, I'm sure have thoughts on that before it goes to council. So that's why I asked that question.
Yeah, and this is something that I think me and Yeah, and this is something that I think me and, um, probably the, the planning manager would want to sit down with the attorney as we kind of go through it. Um, or, or we'll end as well. Um, so, but yeah, yeah, it definitely go hit the attorney first. And then, um, it'll probably be, uh, the attorney will probably be asked multiple questions by council as well as they're going through this, the proposed changes.
Yep.
Thanks, Cash, for bringing that up. I actually had a similar thing with correct section numbers associated with each of the additions.
Yeah, I, I think we can worry about that once we, once we get through the, the substance, and then we can do as much cleanup as we can, and the city attorney will have to, have to do some of that. Because, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure they all line up, the section numbers, that is.
Yeah, it was a little hard to track here. Um, I do have one interesting note here, and this looks to be some of the original stuff. If we go to C two, what is this, two? Say, it's a little hard to follow. This is "Recording of Designation."
Hmm, yeah.
Recording of Designation. What?
Is that on page three?
I don't think there's page numbers, but I think it's the, within the document, it's page two of nine in.
Yep.
Your doc.
That's weird, my document only has eight pages.
Mine is nine.
My, my, this is what, page one, one, no, no matter where I am, wait.
This is, this is the stuff that's the absolute most fun over Zoom.
Okay, so, yeah, you, you're, you're, so, yeah, go back, yeah, recording, that's good. Uh, nope, recording.
It's the, yeah, it's the second one on your search.
Okay.
Uh, "Within thirty days of the effective date of the ordinance designated, oop, uh, designated historic property or historic district for preservation, this city shall record the ordinance with the clerk and recorder of name of county." Uh, I would imagine Arapahoe County, right?
We, I believe all of Inglewood is in Arapahoe.
That's correct.
Yep.
All, all six and a half square miles.
Yeah.
Yes, I saw that too. Yeah, probably, probably won't do any good if it's recorded in, you know, Denver County.
Or, or for that, for that matter, name of county.
Right, yeah.
It's, uh, um, okay, uh, so there's, there's a couple areas in the document where there's appeals process. So, con, dealing with conflict and management of conflict in this particular situation. It defines, in all cases, city council as being the final decision maker with this, or the, the, the final vote. Um, I don't know if that necessarily aligns with how the city operates right now. Um, there is the, you know, the potential for judicial review through the city, uh, city judge. Um, you have the opportunity for, in some cases, issues to go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Do we want to go into that?
Yeah, so it's a good question. Um, I, to me, and I don't know, I, I can't, you know, I, I can't say what happens with other processes in the city of Inglewood. I, I don't know that. But, um, you know, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals is obviously a zoning, a zoning ordinance building code variance, uh, quasi judicial body that, that deals with those issues. But I think ultimately, e- even with the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and again, I don't know, I didn't research this. I think the city council, Eric may know, the city council probably has, they probably don't do it often, but they probably have the authority to override a decision of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Am I right about that, Eric?
Uh, actually, so for the, for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, if somebody appeals a decision by that,
You have to go to court.
It goes to actual municipal court.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and it really just depends on, um, what the process is or what the decision is, because we have certain items such as like limited use permits, um, that if somebody appeals that, then it goes to planning and zoning, uh, and the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a decision on that. So it really depends on the process. So, um, for appeals, I would, I would imagine they would either go to TMZ or BOA.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I was, th- the way that the appellate process was laid out in this draft, which maybe Lauren can comment, uh, it sounds like it was probably taken from some stock language from elsewhere. I, it made sense to me that it would be a, a, a council decision ultimately versus going to one of those quasi judicial bodies. Um, I, I don't know, it, it, it made sense to me that it was structured this way. Uh, Lauren, what, is that where this comes from? Is this some stock language from elsewhere, from model ordinances?
I'm assuming so. Um, I, I'm not really familiar, like, with CLG ordinances and how they read, but I know there are, um, examples out there, and I think that's where Jason got most of this. Um, so, yeah, my guess is that this is just the standard process, but I don't know for sure.
Because the, the other issue.
One, one point.
Sorry, go ahead.
This, this is the appeal of the commission's denial of application. Um, and the way we have it set up, the commission does not deny applications. We, the, uh, city council either approves or denies based on the recommendation of the commission.
Right, yeah, that, that is right. The, the other issue that occurred to me, Matt, and I'm glad you brought this up, because this, this process was one of the main things I noticed and wanted to discuss too. The other issue, if you, if you talk about trying to make it look like a zoning variance or a building code variance and send it to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, that complicates what we're trying to do, the end goal being to get council to adopt what we recommend. To, to expand the jurisdiction of the, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals to deal with all of this. I'm not saying it's not possible, but you're going to have to mess around with a bunch of their ordinances concerning their jurisdiction beyond just doing this. The, the way this is structured with the city council process, it's a, this is a self-contained ordinance that could potentially just be adopted wholesale versus having to tinker with other aspects of the municipal code, just as a practical thing.
Great, agree. That is a very, that's a valid point. That's very good, yeah. See, what else did I have here? Uh, timeframe for public hearings. Thirty days in many places. Yeah. It, I just wanted to bring it up. I don't know the practicality. It's, it's, it's in a few places within the document here. I know that, that, you know, if, if there's a denial, if there's a contesting, if there's the,
Yeah.
whatever, um, a public hearing shall be performed, and I think it was changed from, let's see what it is, "Within forty-five days after the appeal received by the city clerk or within the timeframe agreed by the applicant or owners, indoor owners, and the city, a public hearing shall be held by city council." That's partic, one particular situation, but there, there's a couple different places where public hearing is referenced at the thirty-day interval. I just, I don't know what the practicality of getting that organized within a thirty-day period.
Yeah, I, I had this exact same point. Um, but that's, that's a tight timeframe. Um, the, you know, the, an application shows up and you've got thirty days to make this happen. I, I think it's a little impractical. I, everywhere it says, I mean, I have to go back and review all of them, and there's a bunch of them. Uh, I mean, my initial thought along those lines, Matt, was everywhere it says "within thirty days", there may be some places where it doesn't need change. I mean, I, I would think about expanding that to at least sixty, if not more.
Hmm. Lauren, what, what's the context surrounding that?
I don't know. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have anything to say but that, um, other than, again, I'm assuming this is just standard language. Um, yeah.
Okay. I think so too. That sounds like some pretty stock language, so, um, I think it can be adjusted to suit however we want, want it to sound. Eric, from your standpoint, thirty days seems a little tight, right? It is, it is very tight. Um, I would definitely recommend at minimum forty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, I, like I said, there, there may be, I'd have to go back through each one. I, sixty, I think, should be minimum on these. Because with, with all of this, when you're talking about board action, let alone council action, you know, there's some, there's some council items that are within thirty days. But, you know, like, today is a good example. I guess, I guess we have a quorum right now. There's four of us, although we don't need one, being that it's a special working meeting. But you're going to have to have quorum to take action on, on any of these. And, you know, there's times where even our regular monthly meetings, we, we don't get there. So, yeah, it, it, it seems tight to me.
That's a good point. We might want to, want to think about it as sixty as a minimum.
Yeah.
So, in case we do have to miss a month.
Yeah.
There was, uh, and this is, this was, this one's for Lauren. Uh, site or objects. Um, site, I can understand. Um, even though there is a building on it, you could declare a site as a historic. I think we have to be kind of careful with that, because there was some weird stuff that happened in Littleton with declaring a site with a torn down building as being historic. And then there was some manipulation there where they were able to carry over, um, parking, um, oh, variances and stuff like that for historic properties, even though the building had been torn down. So, potentially be careful with that one. Um, but what about objects? What, how would a object be defined as historic?
I thought of an example of that, actually, when reading through that. Um, the Sherilyn horse car.
Ah, yes.
Right, it's an object.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, again, like, if there's a monument, um, something like that, that, you know, like a monument in a park, like, something like that could be, um, and again, those five words, building, structure, sites, objects, districts, that's all set up by the National Register, um, and there's guidance for what each of those are. And sites are typically, um, I think of like a battlefield or even, um, a park could be a site. Or if there is, like, an archaeological site, that's what site represents. Um, and then, yeah, objects are like Melinda said, um, you know, things that are more mobile, if you will. But, again, if they're going to be listed, they have to be in their spot. But, yeah, an object is just something that's smaller. That's not, like, a structure is, a building is something used to house human activity. A structure is something like a barn that is a building, as we reference it, but not used to house human activity. And then so on and so forth. They each have very specific definitions.
Okay, right, cool. No, that makes sense. Um, the last, the last one I had, um, is percentage of district for designation. I know we talked about that early on, and we're, and I think it was set at fifty percent within the document. Are, are the, the best, the best example of how that will probably get used is Arapahoe Acres.
Yeah. Mm hmm.
And I can totally see the opportunity for, I mean, I would imagine that most people in Arapahoe Acres would support it, but there are the few that don't. Um, just be cognizant of it. If, if there's somebody that absolutely does not want historic designation, does not want the restrictions on their property, how's that dealt with?
Um, to be honest, as, I haven't dealt with this that much, but it's, to me, it is, it's typically a big controversy. And the cards fall where they will, you know, it's, if the majority wants it, then that's what happens.
Does fifty percent constitute a majority?
I mean, that's, I, right now, that's up to us to decide, you know? That's what we had decided at one point.
Yeah. I, I believe that's the majority.
And, you know, the, the idea with it is, like, with districts especially, but with all of these, is like, you know, the, the historic resources are there for the good of the whole community. So, it's, you know, the current property owner may not like it, but in the future, there may be a property owner that does like it, and the community as a whole is for it. So that's kind of, you know, looking at, taking it, looking at the larger picture, if you will, as what it's doing for, yeah.
I, and there, and, and the reason why I brought up the, the majority stuff, sorry, Cash.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so, the, the majority stuff, because in some cases, there, there's, it almost, it, it seems like in, in different legal, and I'm not a lawyer, so don't get, don't get me on that at all. But, um, it just seemed like there, there are situations where, when things pass, it's not actually fifty percent. The majority is considered something else. It's considered a sixty percent is, and I think they did a change to the, the state code as it related to, um, citizen-led, uh, initiatives. They said it was at sixty percent, or, I don't know, it, it's just, the, the, I just wanted to just throw the idea out there as a devil's advocate. What happens when fifty percent of the district says absolutely not, and fifty percent of the district says absolutely, we want this done?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I, I have this, this is another, you, you picked up, I think, all the same points I did in, in reviewing these changes. Uh, we can leave it like this. I, I question whether council is going to approve it, because I think there's probably going to be a discussion among them about, does this need to be some kind of a, let's call it a super majority, so something more than fifty percent. So, I, you know, I, I could see them on their own coming up with, this needs to be two-thirds or sixty-six percent, or however you want to define that. Um, you know, that doesn't mean we shouldn't recommend it, but I could see them going that way, because that's, that's certainly an issue. But, yeah, I mean, I think, to your point, for, for Inglewood's purposes, I, it's probably, I mean, you, you, you all can tell me, it's probably only Arapahoe Acres, and that's probably not super controversial. But I, I would imagine, like Lauren said, whenever you have one of these districts, if it's not unanimous, there's probably some controversy surrounding it. So, that is what it is, and there's a, that's why there's a whole process for, for hearings and council weighing in on a recommendation the commission might make and so forth. But I could see, I think, I think I raised this point back when we were discussing this, before we got into revising this ordinance, that I could see council pushing back on, on a, on a just straight fifty percent uh, of property owners.
Um, I just want to throw in that downtown is also like a really obvious district too. Um, and districts could be as few as just like five buildings or less. You know, there's, they don't have to be a huge neighborhood. Um, it's really just where, where is there a history that ties these buildings together? Um, and, I mean, at this, I think we should maybe discuss this at the next meeting. If it's, you know, something that we really think should be changed, um, get everyone's opinion on it and just go from there. Um, yeah, because I think it is a really important point to discuss and, um, just to make sure we're comfortable with
Yeah.
what the final percentage is. Um, I'm looking right now to try to see what, um, for the National Register, what the percentage is, and I'm not having any luck, so. Um, yeah.
Well, Lauren, that's a, that's a good and interesting point, that the, the way this is structured, and I think it's appropriate, if you're, your point about a smaller district of, of just a few buildings, you know, there's some flexibility here for the applicants, the property owners to define their own district. And so I guess if you, you know, there's a potential to, if, if you have one holdout or two holdouts, to just say, okay, well, we'll make the district something smaller with this group of people who are unanimous about it versus those that are, that are opposed to it. And then, you know, the commission and ultimately the council under this process gets to decide, is that an appropriate, uh, district? But, so, so there is that, um, that's a good point.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, I mean, and I, and I like that. I mean, I like, you, you can leave it in the hands of the property owners and the applicants to have that flexibility to, you know, define and present a district to the commission and then ultimately the council. But, yeah, I think, I think that's worth a, worth a specific discussion at the next meeting as well. I know we've discussed it, that, at length, but I, I think the discussion is not only what we want, but what, what do we think council will actually approve?
Yeah.
Well, and I think we also discussed, though, the, uh, we're putting the burden on the applicant for a district to, uh, get the, uh, approval from the other owners in, uh, within the district. It's, uh, it's not for us to go out and, uh, ask, uh, who wants this and who doesn't.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's also really.
Go heavy, a burden.
Well, yeah, I think it's worth, worth a discussion. Well, yeah, I think it's worth, worth a discussion again, because, you know, it, I don't know. Some might, some might be in favor of it on council, some might, might not, I don't know. I just.
I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, please, go ahead.
I guess my, my thought with it is, like, I don't know, as a commission, like, as a commission member, like, I want to see more things designated. So I would prefer us proposing this to council with a fifty percent because that's, you know, I mean, if you can, if you can get fifty percent buy-in, then that's, it's more likely to be listed. And then if council doesn't like that, then they can, you know, give them the opportunity to request two-thirds or something higher. But, you know, we should, I think we should go at it with making it easier for things to be designated.
Yeah, and, and the other point as well is that if, if, if someone, if, if some group shows up and only has fifty percent, that's something that both the commission and council can consider in making the designation. So it's not like, it's not like you automatically get the designation because you get half the folks to sign on to it. Yeah, I, I can tell you, you know, as a commissioner, if someone showed up and had exactly fifty percent and fifty percent were diametrically opposed, I mean, a really compelling case would have to be made by the fifty percent seeking designation, from my point of view.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
So there are, there's safeguards. Like I said, it's not like you sign up, you get half the neighbors to, to sign up on a, on a, you know, petition form. And then automatically you've got this designation.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have. That's all the, that's all the notes that I have, so.
The other, the other point, you, yeah, those were, I think I had almost all those points, Matt, that you brought up. The, the other one that I wanted to discuss, maybe there was some discussion at the last meeting, but Jason added some example incentives language that's at the very bottom of the document on page nine. So this language, I'm not opposed to, to any of these incentives. I, I, I guess the first question is, do we need these to be in the ordinance? And maybe, maybe the idea is to, to place into the ordinance some language alerting people to the fact that there are these economic incentives out there. That was kind of question or discussion point number one. Number two, it says here, "The commission shall identify and advise the city council regarding the implementation of economic incentives for historic properties. Commission shall notify the owners of the store of properties of economic incentive opportunities available." I'm not opposed to any of that, the commission performing any of those functions. It seems perfectly appropriate. It's just the, the language is a little vague of, of the, how, how and when should the commission do that? You know, advising the city council, is it, is it just when an application has been recommended for approval, we should advise on that? Same with the property owners. So that was a question I had there. And then the, the third is the commission shall, the third point and point number three under incentives is the commission shall make the determination of each request regarding economic incentives. And I wasn't, I just wasn't totally clear what that language meant. So those were my.
Doesn't sound like something that's actually in our job description.
Right, exactly. So I don't know, any thoughts on those?
There should be incentives, right?
Is that just basically referring to potential grant opportunities?
Tax benefits, grant opportunities. I can imagine that could be expanded to many different areas, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we want to be more specific on, on that language, but that's what I think that that's what, at least how, that's how I'm understanding it.
Yeah. I, I guess my, my first blush reaction would be to delete number three. As Melinda pointed out, I'm not sure that's within our job description, that the commission shall make the determination for each request regarding economic incentives. And for number two, something along the lines of, I don't, I don't know if we want to, like I said earlier, if we want to tie that to if we are recommending approval of an application, that would seem the appropriate juncture for advising council on, and the property owner both, on availability of economic incentives. It's just a little vague, like I said, as to the, the where, how, as it's, as it's set up. And I know Jason just grabbed some example language here, but that, that was my thought on that.
Well, let's take a step back. There's actually something that's probably missing here, and, and that is the fact that incentives don't necessarily exist already, right? There are no real incentives for preserving a property, for restoring a property. So if we were to say that we could advise council on, how do we do that? Maybe, okay, so maybe two ways. We advise council on, on, on the opportunities that we may be aware of for incentives. Advise council on properties that should be eligible for a available incentive and work with council on developing incentives.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. The other point too is, is I would probably change this language from a shall to a may. So it's not, it's not mandatory, it's, it's permissive. I mean, I think it's an appropriate function, but it just, you know, shall. Because what does that mean? Like you said, you know, there may be many properties, maybe there's nothing. I, I think it should be probably permissive versus mandatory.
I agree.
I think a lot of these are things that are, they're available for CLGs, but which we aren't yet. Lauren, would you know?
Um, I think that with CLGs, the incentives that come with that or more for, it would be like for us, the commission, like giving us money to do surveys versus actually money and incentives going to the individual property owners.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know there's tax breaks for, uh, for people who are like restoring or rehabilitating or repurposing historic.
Yes, and that's at like the state and the federal level that those are offered.
Yeah. So that's the sort of thing we could advise about, but.
Yeah. Yeah, but we wouldn't, we actually, we could help them with that process, but we wouldn't actually be giving them money or anything.
Yeah.
Well, I, I like to think that there's an opportunity here to take this maybe a step further with the city. And, and some of the stuff the Historic Society has been working on is along the lines of encouraging the city to create incentives for people to be able to adaptively reuse properties and save structures and those sort of things. So that's, that's, it seems like there's a real opportunity that the city could do things themselves. Even it was from a standpoint of refunding permit fees or discounted, you know, if you're a business property, you know, property taxes are a pretty big deal. So you could discount some of the property taxes that the city, or, or, you know, offer grants, you know, funded grants from the city for renovations and things along those lines. But, you know, you look at that and you, you say, well, that doesn't exist now. Could the Historic Preservation Commission be an advisory for encouraging that? And I don't know if that, that serves as a purpose, if there serves any need in this ordinance for us to be tied to advise council on particular incentives. But really, I think that's probably going to be the easiest path towards adaptive reuse and saving properties in the city is to create incentives, and that has not happened yet. So how are we doing? It's kind of my thought.
And that, that links also, though, to the other thing that was sort of on our agenda here is two fifteen, which is the, the statute that actually establishes the commission. And it says what we shall advise the city council on. And say, maybe these incentives or something like that should be added to things we advise the city council about.
Yeah, yeah, that, that may be just practically the more, the place that makes more sense to put that.
I'd be fine with that, yeah.
Because I, I think you would probably put that under two fifteen dash five powers and duties.
Yeah. Okay.
Melinda, real fast here, I just read Helene's email again here. I, I just skimmed it initially and missed the fact that she asked, am I allowed to join late?
And I, I emailed her and said, yes, you know, come when you can.
Well, I was gonna send her email.
Where'd I put it? Here. Oh, all right, yeah. Powers and duties. Yeah, you know, a lot of this is really vague.
I think you're sharing, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, I'm still sharing here. Yeah, and this is the other.
Are we, have we moved on to two fifteen now?
Um, no, I was just going to, uh, grab this other section while I, while I could, while I was remembering.
Okay, okay.
Throw it over into two fifteen.
There's a quick point there, Melinda. I think you're sharing specifically just the one, Melinda.
I'm sharing way too many things here, it's a. All right, wait a second. I'm going to stop sharing for a moment here, so I can get these straightened out. Okay. Now, which one we like to work on now? I can, or let's say.
Where, where did we leave off with sixteen, I guess? Are we okay with?
Yeah, are we done? I've, I've cut this part to and then pasted into two fifteen.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have anything else on sixteen.
I don't either.
Hey. Then, I'll accept changes, then put it all together later on, and, and.
Well, Melinda's doing that. Am I right? Is our regular meeting this month on the sixteenth?
Uh, yes. And. Um, what, okay, so now we're on the two fifteen. A lot of this is really vague stuff. I've often wondered why we needed to say, you know, how are we supposed to foster civic pride in the beauty and accomplishments of the past? I mean, by doing what? How's that a duty?
I was actually thinking, I mean, yes, I agree with you. We worked at the beginning of the commission, we developed our goals and objectives. Would it make sense to kind of plug those in there under powers and duties?
Yes. Yes. That, in fact, I tried to find a electronic copy of those and, and can't, but. Oh, wait a second, all right.
I have our goals and objectives, if you want me to send them to you.
Yeah.
Okay, I, well, I think I have them, I say that. Yeah. From what I have, we have.
I mean, I have. Okay, wait a second. Okay, Lauren, are you sending them?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, there you are. Okay, or.
I, I was looking, all I actually have are PDFs. But it might be easy enough to.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And you know what? I think, I think we have in our goals or objectives, foster civic pride, so.
Okay, well.
Awesome.
Yep, our second goal.
All right.
And if I recall, when we worked on that stuff, it was almost that we shared from the initial. from the initiating ordinance, some of the points into our actual goals and objectives. So that's probably one of them that crossed over.
Yeah, that's what I remember too.
Let's, wait, I'm, alright, I'm going to share a screen again. I hope. Um, so what about, yeah, promote and advise city council, I mean, that's really what we're all about. But we're, it never really talks about, for instance, designating historic properties as, you know, designating Inglewood historic landmarks.
Um, what, what, what about our goals and objectives, did we find those?
Yes, Melinda, did you get the email I just sent to you?
No, not yet.
Okay, I'll read them aloud. So we have four goals, and one is promote and encourage voluntary participation in preserving resources which reflect our city's heritage. Two is foster civic pride and educate the community on the accomplishments of the past. Three is promote and encourage the continued preservation, restoration, rehabilitation, and reconstruction of historic building structures, object sites, and districts. And number four is promote and advise city council on historic preservation. And the objectives are, there's six, and these are a bit longer. One, perform an ongoing citywide inventory of historic properties. Two, identify properties threatened with demolition. Three, create a nomination process for property owners wishing to have a resource designated as architecturally, historically significant, as per 16-611. Create official plaques recognizing a property as historic with the logos of the Inglewood HPC, the City of Inglewood, and the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society, designating a structure as historic. Five, collaborate with the Planning and Zoning Commission and keep Inglewood beautiful. And six, recognize Inglewood Historic Districts with signage and publicity by working with local business and property owners.
Sounds like all of the objectives ought to be added to our powers and duties.
I was just gonna say that, Melinda, I think that would, most of those are actions, so.
Yeah.
Um,
Okay.
That, that could easily be added in there. I think, I think 15's a little bit more delicate, probably, from a legal perspective, because that, that is our existence and what we're allowed to do, so. I, I would guess that the attorney would probably, the city attorney would probably review that a little bit more critical. But that's okay, I mean, if we ask, if, if that's, if that's what our kind of mission statement is and goals as, and objectives, is that we've decided, we want to make sure that that realigns, because obviously when city council or when this was initially written, we didn't exist yet. So it was more or less a creative approach that possibly the city attorney or city council came up with. So now that we're now defined, we know what we want to do, be a good time to adjust that. Do you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with that. Yeah, I mean, it seems to me, you know, for purposes of, of getting something together for our next meeting, yeah, I think, I think if we take those and plug them in, there's obviously going to be some overlap with what's already in here that we'll have to eliminate, but I think if we use that as a starting point to refine it a little bit further, that is the right thing to do.
Well, and that, and this is a relatively short thing, so we can probably work it into adjusting that at our, at our next meeting. They'll,
Yeah.
I'll find my hard copy if I can, or the one that Lauren is sending me. And plug all those in, and, then, as part of the agenda for the next meeting, you'll all get the, the, the latest draft of that and of 16-611.
Great.
Hey.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay. And we didn't have to, let's say, take up a whole meeting with, with this, and, which I think is hopeful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, good. Almost out of time now, right?
Yeah, a couple minutes, but getting close, yeah, thank you for, this is a good idea to do this separate from a regular meeting. It's, it's just with having the, having the two-hour cap and it being, you know, 6:30 to 8:30 at night, I think this is, it's hard to work through this level of detail at a regular meeting.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah, this was really helpful.
And if, I mean, generally is a Saturday afternoon doable for people if we have to do it again?
Depends on the Saturday, but usually.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, some, some, some are difficult for me, but, play fair.
Yeah. I mean, I'll say, I mean, evenings work well for me too, so if it has to be done.
Yeah, we could do that too. And it's nice, I mean, it's obviously preferable if everyone can attend, but it's nice that things move forward without a quorum, if necessary, for a meeting like this.
Yeah, I mean, we, we gave everybody a chance to attend, and, and of course, the idea was, you know, those, those were day jobs that don't work from home. I, hopefully a Saturday afternoon is a little more doable than, than rushing in to something after work. For everybody except Eric and Nancy, who have, end up having to work on a Saturday.
Thanks, thanks again, Eric, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Do we need, unless there's anything else, do we need a motion to adjourn?
I don't think so, if we all agree we're, we're done for today.
Cool.
Alright.
Great.
We're not voting on anything, so.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Yeah, take care, everybody.
Right.
Meeting will be over when Eric pushes the button, so.
Which I'm going to do now.